Oh, good. Okay, I'm here now, Tim. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right about that. Okay. And it looks like, looks like we are live. All right. All right, so. We are recording. I think we're live on Facebook. The time is six nineteen. It is January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And this is a meeting of the Project Review Committee of the Ocean Beach Planning Board. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a committee to the Ocean Beach Planning Board. So what we'll be here is to review projects in some greater detail and provide feedback, you know, to the applicants as well as the planning board. So the applicants here today will go before the full planning board when they, when their projects are further along. They may be far enough along already. So we'll talk about those today. First of all, we're going to introduce the committee members. My name is Kevin Hastings. I am Vice Chair of the Planning Board, and I chair this committee.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Cholubski, District Three on the Planning Board and Vice Chair of this committee. And side note, I don't know if we covered it already. I don't have access to video here. I don't know if anyone's on camera, but it may be because I'm still kind of sharing Kevin's account here, but I can't see anyone, and I imagine you can't see me. So are we cameraless for this meeting, or is it just my, my machine right now?
Hey, Chris, I was actually able to see you for a blip, and then you disappeared.
Jason, let me try it. So maybe it'll take my feed, but then I can't tell that it's doing. How about, how about now?
There we go. I can see it on too, and I can see Tracy as well.
Yep.
Alrighty. I can't see, I can see who's, Richard, I can see her right now. Alright, that'll work. Thanks.
I'm not sure other people have their video on.
Okay.
Worst case, you should have access to the documents that we're going over today. So worst case, you can try to follow along that way.
You know, and I do, I have that pulled up on a different machine, and I can see the screen. I just couldn't see the, the live feed on the camera. So I'm good. Thanks.
And, Richard?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry, Richard Merman, I'm a representative District Two.
Thank you, Richard. And Tom Garanski is absent, and George McCall is also absent. So the first item is to go over today's agenda. Hopefully, you guys can see that, or some of you can see that on the screen. Or you have that available to you. This was an amended agenda because we added in a action item four, five oh one eight, there again, it's actually on the second page. So I'd send out an amended agenda for that. So any proposed modifications or a motion to approve? Actually, in fact, item number two, four seven four, four four Voltaire is not presenting tonight. So I would, I would move to remove that action item number two from agenda.
I'll second it.
And we'll approve that as amended. Anybody opposed to that? Right here, none. That'll be a three zero zero. Minutes. I distributed minutes for October and August of last year of our committee. Hopefully, you guys have had a chance to look at those. And can, if you have any amendments to those, or a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Those, Chris? I will check on the attendance on the real quick here.
I don't believe I was here for the August meeting, so I can't vote on that one. But yeah, November one is okay. I'm, I'm okay with that.
August. You were here on August.
No, I'm sure I was on the other side of the planet, but that's okay.
Um, and then October, it says you're absent October.
Oh, I was.
Yeah. Maybe I got those backwards. I can double check that.
Thank you, if you would.
I will, well, we'll just approve these pending my double checking of the attendance on those. Okay. With that said, any objections to approving those minutes? Okay, we have a second on that one? Let's see. I guess that'll have to be me if Richard was potentially absent there. So I'll second that, Chris. And Richard's gonna abstain. Well, how's that gonna work? You're gonna abstain on on the August minutes.
One that I was missing. That's only appropriate.
Fair enough. I will, I'll make that clear on the record of tonight's minutes. Okay, so moving on. The next item is non-agenda public comment. This is for any item that is not on the agenda tonight. If a member of the public or even the committee wants to speak on anything under the purview of the board, they have that opportunity now. And I'll check for anything in the chat here. Okay, so hearing none. We're going to move on to action item number one. That is forty-nine fifty-three Coronado Avenue. That's a process three permit, coastal permit to demolish an existing detached garage. There's an existing single family on site, and the project will construct a new twelve hundred square foot ADU over an attached garage with a roof deck. That's in the RM two four west of Sunset Cliffs Boulevard. Is the applicant here and able to, ready to screen share to present that?
Yes, Kim Grant, the architect for the project, is here.
Great. So this is how I want to do this. Kim, if you could go through the, you know, the pertinent drawings, elevations, any photos that you think characterize the project well, some floor plans, go through those. If anyone has any very, very, very quick questions, feel free to interject, but I want to save the, the questions and commentary for after that. So we'll do presentation. We'll follow that with any real quick clarification questions from, from the board. And then we'll follow that with public comment, and then we'll follow that with the board discussion and vote. So, Kim, fire away. You should have screen sharing ability. I will stop mine.
I do. There we go. Can you see that?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so just a little description on this property. It's a forty-foot wide lot by, let's see, almost a hundred and forty feet wide, or sorry, long. So it's very narrow, as you can imagine. And so our goal was to try to keep kind of the scale of the project from the, from the, from Coronado Avenue to feel, you know, scaled down. So we're keeping the original front house, single story. It's, it's under eight hundred square feet. And the ADU and garage are pushed towards the alley because it, really, the development of the street, as you all probably know, it's pretty highly developed towards the alley. And so we wanted to follow the development of what's already there, and it made a lot of sense for my client to do that as well. So we tried to kind of wedding cake terrace the, the bulk and scale towards the alley. So that was kind of our initial intent on this. I'm just going to scroll through my plans. I mean, I'm not going to bore you with the civil stuff. And we'll just go right to the floor plans. This right, so the main house is up front. Again, it's seven hundred and fifty-two square feet. And the rear building has a two-car garage coming right off the alley. The, the finished floor of that garage is the same finished floor as the existing garage. The existing garage is a one-car garage, so we're adding an additional parking spot, even though we're not required to for the ADU part of it, but we do have two parking spots. And then we've got the, the kitchen, bedroom, and a bathroom on the ground level of the ADU, and we have a little patio and kind of garden setting between the front of the ADU and the back of the front house. I will say that my client will be, they live in the front house, and they will be, they will stay occupants of the front house. They will not be renting the front house out. Upstairs, the second story, you go up the stairs, we have the living room is on the second story. We have the, another bedroom, closet, and bathroom on the second story. We have an, a deck towards the west side. We have a spiral staircase to the roof deck. The roof deck is, this is the footprint of the roof deck. Look down onto this covered, it's partially covered deck below. Part of it's solid, just protect the doors below. We've got sort of a trellis element out in front of it for just dappled light. And then we have gabled roofs that, again, that's the second story. That's the first story. And again, it kind of wedding cakes down towards the front. This is the front of the ADU as seen from the back of the front house. We're, we're trying to pick up on, you know, the cottage district feeling as far as, you know, having a few of the elements. It's obviously not a craftsman bungalow, but we're taking some of those elements as far as the horizontal siding on the bottom, shingles on the top. We have a, a, a kind of a dividing band that you often will see. Overhangs, brackets, you know, trying to give it some character and some depth. And again, this is a forty-foot wide lot, so, so it's narrow. So what we're doing on the west side of the building is we have a four-foot setback downstairs where three foot is minimum, but we wanted, you know, more walkable area. We're cannily bringing out the second story just by one foot to the three-foot setback, just to be able to get enough width to have the ADU. And we're taking advantage of the ADU rules and having a zero setback on the east side, which happens to also be the development of the, of properties, like the immediate adjacent property actually has the same exact development where it's loaded towards the east and pulled away from the west side a little bit. So we're kind of following that development as well. The side view, this is looking from the west side. This is the alley here. Again, we've got the horizontal siding on the bottom. We've got the, the breakup, the belly band. And then we have shingles on the top portion. You can see we've got slope roofs here and here. And again, you can see the front house, and then it kind of wedding cakes up. So it really, it follows the orientation of the grade. And again, I'll show you some pictures down the alley. Everything's packed towards the alley. So the, the infill part of it seems to kind of go along with what's already happening. This is the alley view. So we've got the garage, again, the horizontal siding, the shingles. This right here is basically open because that's part of where the, the balcony deck is on the second story, and then here is where the roof deck is. And then along the side where we've got the zero setback, you know, the ADU zero setback, my client would like to do stucco because it meets the fire rating. We have some glass block just for, it's one-hour rated glass block, which we can have on the, on the property line, just to kind of break it up a little bit. So it steps back three feet from here to here. So again, it kind of has a offsetting planes, which I know is a good thing to have. And again, you can see the, the raptor tails, brackets, and, you know, trying to get a little character in there. And then right here is where the patio and garden is located, and then it steps down to where the garden is for the main house. So again, we tried to disorient along the grade. So the alley is here. We obviously haven't changed that. Front house is here, haven't changed that. We've just tried to step up to kind of where it's going naturally. I'm not going to get too much into the sections. As far as fencing, we're showing, you know, six foot solid, three foot seventy-five percent open, and we're stepping with the grade aim on this other side. And then as far as the landscaping goes, landscape architect is not on the call, but his intent, I won't read it word for word, but the intent is to have some small trees to kind of scale the project to the, to the neighborhood and low water use plants. A lot of these plant materials are actually existing to remain. And he talks about doing, you know, a drip irrigation system and being cognizant of low water usage. So that's, that's the, the plans. As far as contextually, I'll just give you a quick overview. This is the subject property. This arrow is pointing at the little funky garage that is going to be torn down to be replaced with the ADU. And zoom along here. Little closer shot here. Again, it's, it's right here. You'll see there's three-story buildings here. There's all kinds of buildup, and again, it seems to be towards the alley for, for a lot of the block. I mean, two stories, two stories, two stories. This is like two and a half stories, I think. And then looking down the alley, this is our project. And you can see everything's wedged right up to the alley, two stories. Looking the other direction, again, two stories, three stories, two stories, two stories, and right on down the line. A little further down the alley, again, here's kind of that two and a half story, or I don't know what that is really. And then two, 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 two. Everything is towards the alley. So following suit here, the front, the front house, again, this is right at the beach, three stories, single story, single story, and then this is a subject property. You can see it's behind plants, staying single story, single story. In a little bit broader view, you can see the ocean's over there. So it's staying that scale. I will tell you that the current house built nineteen thirty-eight is a little stucco box, basically, and we're going to, we are going to side it with either the horizontal or the shingle siding as part to this project so that the, the property reads together is the plan. Let's see, I was also going to show you one other thing. This is kind of an overhead view looking down. Again, this is the little house that's going to stay in the front. Here's the yard that's going to get improved as part of the project. This will be the, the new garden patio for the ADU, and the ADU goes right here. And you'll see from like, for example, the neighboring property, they're, they're kind of doing the same thing where they're wedged against the east side, and there's a little bit of airspace on the west side. We're doing the same thing. We're wedging against the east side and having a little bit of airspace on the west side. Just wanted to point out that development. And I think that's it. I think I think I'm ready for questions if you have any. I'll go back to the start of this.
Can you summarize real quick the floor area, building height?
Yes. Yes, okay, so the area of the ADU is eleven hundred and ninety-nine square feet. I should say eleven ninety-nine point five two. So we went right to what we were allowed to do. And we've got two parking spots where the ADU isn't causing any new parking spots. So the two parking spots would normally be associated with the front house. Right now, there's only one parking spot for the front house, so we're improving that. You probably saw the view down the alley where there's cars littered on both sides, which is kind of typical. So they're, they don't want to get in that situation. So they've got the two parking spots. The intention is to let the ADU occupant have one of the spots, and then the owners who are in the front will have the other spot in the garage. As far as the height, this is probably a good shot to look at the height. This, let's see, we're down here. And this is the thirty-foot height limit, as you can see, following the grade. You can see it kind of reflecting the grade up the side here. So that's the thirty-foot height limit. So we're below the height limit. And the highest point of the house is right there. So can you give me the distance below thirty for that? So it's a couple of feet below the, the height limit. So one second, let me just.
Seven or twenty-eight from this side.
So it's where's the alley? It's about thirty inches lower than the thirty-foot height limit right here. It's a little bit less here. As we go down, as we go down the slopes, it's like two foot nine below the height limit right here. And then right here, it's, it's quite a bit lower. It's, it's in the sixteen-foot below height limit here. And of course, you can see the front house is well below it as well.
What about the floor, the floor area ratio?
Oh, well, this, the lot size is three thousand four hundred and seventy-one point ninety-five square feet. Our FAR is allowable is point seven. So the allowable, two thousand four hundred and thirty square feet, and we're at twenty-four hundred and ten square feet. So we're twenty-five feet below FAR.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item?
You know, at about three o'clock, I saw a comment from the neighbor. That's the only thing I've heard of. We haven't gotten any comments from our plant, you know, from the project manager at the city.
Oh, no, I was, I mean, public comment from the, anyone on the meeting here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it, I have some comments here that the math doesn't seem to be right here.
I think there is some public commenters on here.
Roger that. We'll talk about it in a minute.
My ask to unmute. There's a Susan on here. Hi Suzanne, do you have a comment on this one?
Yeah, I think Kevin, you, I think I can share my screen. Is that correct?
Yes, you should have that ability. I'm going to unshare hers. Do you see a share screen option down at the bottom? So if you have it opened on your end.
Yes.
Well, everyone knows how to use Zoom now. I don't need to explain.
Let's see if I can do this.
And you submitted something earlier. I, I distributed that, so.
Yeah, it'd be nice to be able to show this on screen because.
Probably pull it up as well.
It's given, oh, here, let me see if I can do this.
Or I can pull it up if you're able to.
Oops. Nope, it's not going to let me do that. Yeah, if you can, it's, it's gonna, it's wants me to go off Zoom. I don't want to do that.
Let me give it a try here.
Yeah, I think if we can pull up first that section.
The first page is, is an email. Do you want me to go to?
Yeah, just go to the attachments. That's good for a first start. So obviously, our, our concern is we are slightly, we're, we're at a lower elevation as you go down Coronado Avenue to the east. My little people, sorry, this is a very rude drawing, but I wanted to give you an idea of my two-story building versus their two-story building substantially different. You know, old ocean beach. I understand there's new laws for construction and whatnot, but there is a point where even as developers and landlords and property owners that we are, we always try to be very cognizant of our neighbors and what we're going to do to them. This is exactly what I would never do to one of my neighbors. You can see the second, the top roof line of the second story and the balcony and all the second story windows. They're pretty much completely going to be in the shadow of this building. It, it's a huge, basically, by the time you, even, even considering the three-foot setback, this is relatively accurate. I took it off their plans. But that, that's my first concern. My neighbors already contacted me. They said this is a behemoth. We're not even going to be able to see light of day. And that, that's probably everybody's complaint. The downstairs unit, he's gonna, it's already a little bit darker because just of the way it's set in the building, but it, he's, the bedrooms, no light. The living room, no light. They're in complete shade. Can you go to the next strong? Okay, this gives you a pretty good idea. So I have a thirty-foot, no, sorry, top thirty-foot, twenty-eight-foot height while on my, on our property line. That's just a solid, flat, uninteresting wall. It's just, I mean, literally, when you look at the sunlight up above, I put my little sun up there. Light of day. There's got to be some quality of life that deals with, just, I mean, you literally have to go outside and look up to see sky because you can't see sky out of any window. You're going to be looking at stucco wall. Can you go to the next one, please? Can you slide up a little bit? So, yeah. Yeah, there you go. Okay, this gives you an idea. There's my two-story, there's their two-story. That's a huge difference. Granted, I'm lower by about thirty inches. They have their, their building is going from, you know, they're saying how the buildings along the back are stacked along the black back. I do have a one a house in the front with the triplex in the back. We have a lot of open space around them. There's a nice courtyard between them where the architect said, I, we have, we're stacked on the, on the west side. We have between four and five feet on the left side and eight and a half feet on the, sorry, four and a half feet on the east side and approximately eight and a half feet on the west side next to this neighbor. So, you know, I, I get that they're a tiny, long, skinny lot, and it's, it's difficult. But this is, I mean, when you look at the behind this building, what my people are going to be staring at, it's, it's quite shocking. And there's, there's definitely ways of doing architecture where you take into consideration, you know, pitch of roof. So it's more interesting. Having, having a pitch in a roof also allows the, that wall to come down and not be a twenty-eight high-foot wall. They also have storage up on their upper balcony, not the balcony, sorry, the roof deck. And that's a four-foot wide, four-foot deep by four-foot high storage unit that even, even having that not be there and having it figured somewhere else. My goodness, it's a twelve hundred square foot place. They have room for storage. But even that would allow for more light, whether it was an open, you know, open railing that would at least allow some light to hit my residence. But the way it stands right now, this is, it, it's unbelievable. And I, I'm not even sure how it works during construction, how they can build a massive wall that runs the, almost the entire length of our triplex, including that little three-foot setback without severely restricting a safe passage for the tenants going. That's how they get to their garages. That's how they get to the trash and recycling and how they get out the back when they're, you know, going to the beach on the other side. You know, don't they need permission in order to be able to build on a zero lot line? And I, I don't, I just don't understand how, how that works. So it'll be interesting to see what you all say. And I know the city of San Diego, I've got to do some research on that side too, as far as access to my property. Because a thirty-foot wall is, that's a lot of, that's a lot of wall for somebody to build, and they obviously can't build it on, on their side. So that's all.
Thank you, Suzanne. See, is there anybody else from the public?
Evan, can I just say something? This is Stacy.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, I actually currently rent the front house that Suzanne is my landlady. The only thing I wanted to add was just the do, do you happen to have the photo I sent you of our walkway there that shows how narrow it is? Because I have it handy if.
I don't think I have the ability to share that.
Okay, I can share my screen. I have it. Is that cool?
Sure, I'm going to stop the Suzanne's share.
I'll just explain, my only concern, I'm a mom. I have a kid who's eleven and a kid who's thirteen. My eleven-year-old's job is taking out our trash. And so my primary concern would just be his safety when he is walking to take out the trash. And this is the walkway right here. And there, where you see a fence now is where that giant wall would be that they'd be working on for I don't know how long. And so my only concern would be, is my, you know, little boy going to be walking through a construction site every time he takes out the trash. That just as a mom, that makes me very concerned because it's pretty narrow here, as you can see. And he's, of course, carrying heavy bags of trash and everything. And then, you know, I, I just don't know, like, would he have to wear a hard hat? Would he have to wear closed-toed shoes? He's a beach kid. He wears barefoot most of the time. So that, so that would be my concern when they're doing the actual construction. And then once it actually comes into play, we're looking at some, that's like basically what I'm looking at at my back patio. But you can see, we have a, we have a fairly large back patio. There's a lot of open space right now. So this is all gone. There's a lot of open space right now, so, um, this is all gone, pretty much. So, uh, it doesn't affect my house as much as my neighbors in the triplex, but, there is quite a bit of sky here, as you can see, that we sure love. So we, we would love for that to just be taken into consideration, our quality of life back there.
Go back to that one, had the big, black, shadow on it.
Yeah, and that's not even, because it would go further back, because this is, this black shadow doesn't go all the way back to the garage.
Okay, I think we get the, the gist of it. Let's see, I think that's, I didn't see anyone else to comment on this.
What is that big black thing you just showed? What is that?
I think that represents the outline roughly of the, of the new construction from her, her perspective. Let's see here, uh, so let's go ahead.
Is it, is it possible for Kim Grant, the architect, to make a comment? Just because I think that was a little bit misguided, misinterpreted.
Yeah, go, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, I want to point out that almost lined up with the front occupant's backyard is where we have a back-to-back garden between the front house and the back house. And the first thing that would happen towards the alley past that double garden is a single-story roof. So there's not a two-story building in that area where it was just a black box, just wanted to point that out.
Okay, yeah, I don't know where that photo was taken from, but I'll, I'll take your word for it. It's, it's gonna be something resembling that scale, though, from, I guess, maybe her neighbor's perspective. I don't know if that was the.
Yeah, I didn't take a picture of, I could go up on the second story of my neighbors, but, um, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so, so this, this, uh, the, the full height of this would line up roughly with the, I guess, that porch part that sticks out from the neighboring property, that sort of covered entry of the two-story.
And maybe it actually, it actually, if you go back to one of mine, it shows where the second, where it drops down to the second story. I'm sorry, which drops from the first story down to the second, and that projects out a little bit closer to that open courtyard area. But again, because it's up higher, um, if you go to the one that says elevation both properties, that gives you a little bit of an idea of how, you're still covering up, you know, all of the doors and windows, uh, from the lower triplex.
It wasn't clear to me how they related to each other until I saw, it was the Suzanne's, I didn't see the other property.
Yeah.
Like, which they, they've always required me to put all the neighboring properties on the site plan, but anyways. So, let's go ahead, um, to board comment. I don't mind starting it off, but you want to give it a shot, Chris or Richard?
Yeah, I'm happy to, to jump in. You know, I, I just, um, I wanna give kudos to Suzanne and the neighbors here, because they're actually doing some of the job of this committee for us. There is such a thing called right to natural light, and, um, it's something that we should be thinking and talking about a lot more as, as a planning board, and, we are really gonna have a lot more of these conversations as the, the setback laws get reduced, ADU's laws get extended. And, uh, I just can't believe what I'm seeing here. I, I, I don't care how narrow the lot is, uh, and I don't care what the ADU laws say in terms of encroachment, uh, upright to the zero property line. If you're gonna do that in combination with maxing out the height and then not even include, um, you know, responsible window placements, it's a miss on every level. I, I, I just can't believe it. And, um, I, I absolutely can't support this. And, and frankly, look at our community plan, because there, although it does mention how we want the scale to go from smaller front house, you know, up to the second or story off the alleys, or that progression. There's also conversation about variation in facade and scale and, and, and windows and things like that. But, um, to put a wall right next to the neighbors, and again, um, there is a real thing. It, it is, is a quality of life issue, natural light, right to natural light. And, um, it's definitely the, the obligation of this planning board to be thinking and enforcing that, that idea, regardless of, of what you might be able to accomplish through, through setbacks, uh, you know, reduction of setbacks and those types of things. So, uh, what we're really gonna end up, if we're not cognizant of that, we are gonna continue to try to climb over the top of our neighbors, and it'll be a race to the property line, who can build right up against the fence. And, uh, it, you know, we're already seeing some of that. And, uh, but when you combine that with a lack of consideration from the design perspective, and I'll tell you, from my work at the airport, working with high-class nationally, world, international firms that focus on design and architecture, one project specifically been working for nine months, and we've commissioned an architect to do nothing but sun analysis and daylight studies. And, uh, to see the omission of that in a community like the one we live in, uh, it's atrocious to me. So, those are my comments.
Okay, Chris. Richard?
Yeah, Chris, I, I, I absolutely agree with all of your comments. Kimberly, I really liked your plans and the way you put it, put them out. But I also liked the fact that the neighbors came out to talk too. I, I was just, I think this misses on a lot of things. I don't agree with some of, um, the ADU rules that the city just, or the, the state actually just said you could build right to the property line. And I hear the neighbors talking about, oh, are my kids gonna be able to get, or during construction, you're gonna have scaffolding on the neighbor's property just to build that twenty-eight-foot wall, which by the way, is a lot more than two floors, that's three floors. So, I have a lot of problems with this. I don't think I'm gonna agree to recommend this either. I'm just gonna keep my comments real short, but, um, a- and again, I think, like Chris said, I think you guys are all working on some issues here that the planning boards are gonna need to deal with. So you're kind of doing our job for us. And I can applaud that too, because, and it's good that you come out too and work it out. We, we don't need lawsuits, suing each other, suing our neighbors and, and building on top of our neighbors too. I, I agree with Chris. That's, that's, that's the most I can add here, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I have some questions for, uh, Kim, was it?
Yes.
I'm looking at the east elevation, which is the, the side from, it's in question here.
Yes.
Zoom in on that one.
Can you see my screen?
Yeah, yeah, it's being shared. The, the garage shows a twelve-foot floor to ceiling.
Yes.
And then the, the ADU above it has a ten-foot floor to ceiling. And then, the floor dimension itself is, is, uh, I don't know, it's probably a fourteen-inch EGI joist or something like that. A fifteen or sixteen-inch floor.
Right.
The roof is another twelve inches, and then we have a four feet up to the parapet on the roof. And then, it looks like the grade is being raised up to level it with the alley, which is sort of the, the high point there on that back corner. I mean, it's, it's a relatively low, a low-slope lot, it looks like that's being built up.
The garage marries up, the garage finished floor is the same as the current finished floor, because we have to marry up to the existing alley. But we are bringing the floor of the house, it, it's actually one step down from the, from the garage level. But we are still keeping it somewhat consistent with the garage level in the back.
Okay, I guess, and I, I see on this, on this view, it's right up against that thirty-foot profile in, in two locations. It's just a, just a hair below it at the pitch, and then at the corner of the, um, the parapet there. So I'm curious, um, why do we need a twelve-foot-high garage and a ten-foot ceiling in the unit? I mean, no one has ten-foot ceilings out here, and then a four-foot parapet on top. It just seems, it seems like this is all trying to just raise it up as, as high as possible, I, I guess, for the views? Is that the idea?
Well, I, I don't believe there's really any views from this property, because there's a three-story building, that's what my client told me, um, because of the three-story building that's along the coast. So I, I can let Deborah, who's the owner, can speak to that a little bit. But the, the ceiling heights were specifically accommodating what my client has requested. Um, I will say that this area here that Suzanne, the neighbor, was talking about, where we did put some storage up there, thinking that that would be nice to kind of stash anything that's up there. I think my client would probably be open to making that open railing, which would, you know, lessen the load of that solidness. Um, the other thing, um, because I talked to my client after I saw Suzanne's letter and wanted to have a little bit of a response. Um, the other thing that Deborah, the owner, um, said that she would be open to considering is putting the shingle and siding combination on this side rather than the stucco. I mean, quite frankly, she was trying to save some money on that. Just everything, all the, you know, costs are climbing, so, but she said that she, you know, would look into being agreeable to that, if that would be helpful, um, for the look of that side. So, um, again, if we can maybe open that up with railing, get rid of any storage up there, and then do the, um, the finish that would be more interesting than the stucco, um, I think, I think, I think we could talk her into doing that.
Was there a, a fire resistance concern with the siding there being run on, on the property line?
Well, whatever the siding is, has to be one-hour rated, and we are using hardy horizontal plank, plank siding and the hardy shingles. So we could accommodate it with that. It, you know, honestly, it's really more about the cost, because it's kind of a.
Where they, yeah, they do, they do siding on just the very front facade from the street, and then everything else is stucco.
Right, right, so.
Siding on the other side, I noticed. And you, yeah, you answered my question there, I was about to ask that. The, the roof, uh, parapet and/or railing, that would, it seems like that would negate the ability to use that as a storage area, so.
The storage would be gone.
I assume that maybe there'd be an alternative place to put that. I mean, that does effectively expand the roof deck by making a, like, instead of storage, so maybe another part of the, I don't know, maybe, maybe there's another option for that. It, I, I, I see what you're saying, it, you don't have to drag and stuff up there, and, but you want to be able to keep stuff out of the weather as well. The, yeah, I mean, the floor and ceiling heights and the raised grade and the second-floor height and the parapet, I mean, it just, it just all seems very unnecessary to accomplish a, a two-story house that, as you said, doesn't really have much for views. And the reason is because there's a thirty, there's a forty-foot building on the beachfront there that was built prior to the, to the property.
Right.
And, let's see here, is, what about the construction concerns? Do you have a sense of how this gets erected without impacting the neighbors? Are they gonna have a, a tunnel to walk through underneath scaffolding during that phase? How do you do the stucco on this, how, you know?
Well, th- those are wonderful questions. Um, in my, I've had a couple of projects where we, you know, had ADUs and have had to actually suspend some things to not get onto the neighbor's property. Logistically, exactly how they're going to do it, I, I couldn't answer that question, but, the plan was not to go onto the neighbor's property with any scaffolding or anything that would be of any danger. I mean, they're following OSHA rules and everything. So I don't know logistically exactly how they're going to do it, but the contractor, who is already, we already know who the contractor will be on this, knows he's got a challenge over there.
I mean, they're gonna have to go on the property at some point, unless it's a tilt-up construction, I, even then, it would.
Right, right. Well, and, and, and that's, and that's actually more conversation that my client would need to have with Suzanne, because the current block wall that's out there, that's on Suzanne's side, is failing. She probably has pictures of it. And, and so, so a lot of the, the wall, it's her wall, a lot of the wall is on her property, but at some point, because we've had it surveyed, at some point, that wall starts to cross over to Deborah's side. And, um, I know that Deborah, at some point, was gonna talk to the neighbor, and, um, she was going to offer to pay to rebuild that wall, but on her property, on Deborah's property. So that at the, at the end of the day, Suzanne would actually have, um, you know, the thickness of the block that's on her property now, she would gain in, in walkable area. So that's a conversation between Deborah and Suzanne, and I, I'm, I'm not part of that communication, because it's, you know, owner to owner. But that was, Deborah was thinking.
When you talk about this retaining wall, um, you're talking about because the property to the east is slightly lower grade.
The property to the east is lower, in fact, as you know, it's highest at the, at the coastline, and it goes, it all goes downhill towards inland.
Can you guys, this is Suzanne, I'm sorry, can you go, if you go back to that section that says section both buildings? Or it's a, it's the one that shows the light of day, the, the sun, the sun picture? That actually shows the wall, and, and it shows the setback of the existing garage.
Let me try that, I think she's talking about something that I had up here. Okay, let me see here. This one here?
Yeah, that one works. So if you see that, that little tiny, right in front of the guy, and it so shows a green structure, says existing garage. That's the existing garage line, and then about two feet to the east, that little, towards the little man, is that little retaining wall that they're talking about. So that's just a, that, that happens to be on the property line? But there's no way they could build a twenty-eight-foot wall on top of that retaining wall. Obviously, that has to come out, that's just basic construction. That, that's gonna get demoed no matter what, because they can't build on top of that tiny little.
Well, I mean, it's a footing, it's gotta go down into submerged.
Well, yeah, exactly, they're, they're gonna have to have a, a major footing there, and they're also going to, that, that little retaining wall that they're talking about, that's not meant to hold anything, it's meant to hold back a tiny bit of dirt. So, obviously, that's gonna come down.
It would go down.
Yeah, so, so now we're talking about, on, on my side, it's twenty-eight plus another, um, twenty-four inches. So it's, it's that, at the back of the building, that's thirty feet up in the air. Um, and even if they take down, you know, part of the, uh, part of the, the roof, not the roof, part of the rooftop deck, you know, opening that up, I mean, that definitely helps give me a little bit of light coming through. But, I mean, I could draw a line across there, and you can see, it's still, it's, it's massively up there. I mean, you, you're still looking up to, to get daylight. So, I, I.
All right.
I understand their, I understand their problems.
Here, um, I think we understand the, the contention here.
Yeah.
I, there was two other things I wanted to bring up. The, the ADU laws, there is no such thing as an ADU in Ocean Beach. There is not a single shred of municipal code that refers to an ADU that is applicable in the coastal zone, because none of that has been certified by the Coastal Commission. So, this is actually a companion unit. You know, next year, might be called an ADU. Those are not certified. The, the difference that makes, um, the coastal code versus the city code is the, our code requires, it only allows seventy-five percent of the FAR, the, the usable FAR to be used for, uh, non-parking purposes. So, what that means is, this is about a hundred and twenty square feet over that amount. And I can point, I think it's, uh, one thirty-one oh four four six E that covers that. I mean, that's something that's specific to the RM two-four zone, in the, in the coastal region. The city did not flag that, they missed that half the time on these things. So here's my question. If you had to remove a hundred and twenty square feet, give or take, uh, from the living area of this build, I don't expect you to have the answer right now, but I'm curious if that could be done in a way that, gives a little bit more breathing room to the neighbors. If the city required that of you.
Do whatever we were required to do, for sure.
I mean, or you could take it off the other end, the west side, and still keep it up against the property line.
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, we'd have to look at, I mean, i- if that's what the rule is, I mean, like you said, the city didn't flag it, and we were not aware. I, I know that ADUs require. ADUs require coastal permit. That is the part that I know that they're waiting on the coastal permission to certify whether they could do coast exemptions on ADUs. I was not aware that. OB was not. ADU applicable. So I.
Coastal Zone, um. So far. There's basically, there's like a year lag between a, a code change and a coastal. Uh, program amendment. And usually. They go through, uh, sometimes the Coastal Commission will, uh, require changes on that. Um, depending on the issue. The, the other thing is the roof deck. If that exceeds forty-two inches, it counts towards the FAR. So this four-feet stuff is, uh. That's not allowed either. Um. Up to forty-two is allowed and I think that's the minimum anyways for, uh, for safety. These days, um, so. That's the only thing I see in here that I think would force any changes on this from the city end. Um, as far as the. Planning board and the OB community plan goes, I mean, I agree with the sentiments of the others. I mean, there's a lot of language in the. The community plan that talks about, um, you know, spacing of buildings. Um, in the, you know, bulk and scale and sort of, um. You know, respecting the arrangement of the neighboring buildings. And I don't. I don't really see any of that effort in this project. Um, I mean, it just looks like I'm gonna build a big stucco wall. Up on the property line. Uh, and build up. I mean, the floor heights on this thing are just. I, I just haven't seen that. I mean, are you going to put an automotive lift in the garage? It just. Twelve feet is really high. I can stand on my own head and not touch the ceiling in there. Um, so it just seems like a lot of effort has been made here to just build a giant wall. And I think, um, I think the planning board. Is going to find plenty of stuff in the community plan to shoot this down for that. Um, in addition to the city. FAR issues. So I would definitely recommend that the applicant try to. Um. Look at an alternative plan for that, uh. Reduced FAR, again, that's seventy-five percent livable area. Um, I think, I think the code actually says twenty-five percent must be reserved for parking uses of the FAR. And that's applies to the entire property. So I would look at that and I would look at anything you can do to improve this, um, east elevation here. You, you mentioned the siding, um. You know, opening. You know, open railing there, you know, if you could lower that, if you can pitch that. Um, away, that would be even better, a pitched roof there. On that side, I see a lot of that where they have sort of a. Uh, different pitches on, depending on which side of the building it's on. Uh, it gives you an opportunity to put, um. Solar panels on there, uh, if you had some pitches in there. Uh, so. That's my thoughts. Um. I, I think that's about all we're going to get through on this one, uh, tonight. Um. Is there anything else?
Kevin, can I just, can I throw in just a collaborative suggestion, um, and to your point about, uh, the FAR and if. If in fact, we're looking at a hundred and twenty-foot reduction. Um, you know, maybe something that could go a, a distance and solving the concerns of the neighbors is. Uh, reducing or eliminating, if you can't do it from the east, then do it from the south. You know, remove part of that buildup over the garage and then you're still going to let some good south and southwest light enter the neighbor's property. Because again, I understand that this lot is very narrow, um, that they're looking to build on and if they're. Insistent on encroaching up to the zero property line on the east, then I would strongly. Uh, encourage looking at the south and, and pulling back, you know, the facade of the wall on the south of the alley or, or as you suggest, maybe a combination of. That and a gabled roof or some sort of angled. Uh, you know, roof system because that, if you look at Google Earth, as I've been staring at it for a few minutes, the aerial view shows you clearly where. The new footprint of this extension to the north off the garage would land sort of in line with the neighbor's building. Um, but in it, but if you were able to reduce. Over the garage on the south side of the property east, you're gonna let some light come into half of the neighbor's, uh, building. The property to the east, so my two cents there.
Um. I wonder also about this, the raising the grade. I mean, is that, is that dirt added in and, and compacted? With a footing built on top of that? I mean, generally, why I see people actually will dig out the grade. To level out a floor of a new area. Uh, I think that's the cheaper way to do it and you've got five feet. Distance to the alley. To transition to the alley, uh, grade. So. I, it's, I think that could definitely be done. It would actually make the project cheaper and it would drop it a few feet. Hmm, um. All right, um. Does anybody have a motion on this one?
I, I'll motion not to recommend approval to the full planning board until the things we've, um, brought up today have been addressed.
Is that a conditional approval or just?
No, I, I would say.
With these recommendations.
Not ready for primetime. I, I would, would not recommend going to the full planning board.
Um. Can you do a motion?
I think I'm inclined to second that motion.
Can you do an affirmative motion, not a motion on what we don't want to do? Like a motion to reject unless would be an affirmative motion.
I was with you to the last part. Say it again, Kevin, motion to reject what?
That it, something that's affirmative. What action are we taking? Not recommending something is not a. Not an action.
I, I would, uh, my, my recommended action on this would be that the applicant. Take into account the suggestions made by the subcommittee as well as the review of the Florida area ratio analysis. And come back to this committee once they feel like those are solved.
Okay, that works.
I'll second that.
Okay, any, uh, last comments? Um. All right, let's vote. I think, uh, this is going to probably be unanimous here. I, I support that.
I'm a yay.
I'm a yay.
Okay, um, Kim. Um, feel free to contact me, um, about any of these specific references to. The code and, uh, community plan. I can provide those to you. Um. I will, at the very least, package those, uh, prior to any future board meeting on this.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds great. And, and since we're obviously going through the CDP, um, process, I'll talk to our planner as well and, and ask them. Why they didn't flag these things, uh, because that's, it was a little bit surprised, but, um, we're happy to accommodate all the things that we need to accommodate.
Well, I know the answer to that question.
Oh, because everyone's quitting at the city, that, that, that problem?
Well, that's part of it. They, they've got codes to enforce and they keep deleting the coastal codes out of their, their code book. Um, rather than retaining the codes that are active, so, um. Yeah, feel free to CC me on those. Um. I will, it's honestly, that, that's going to come up, so it's better to. Deal with it now. You don't want to be dealing with that when you're, you know, ready to, is. Ready to start construction and, and neighbors are going to raise those issues. I mean. I, I think if I lived next to this one, I wouldn't even. Let you on my property. I wonder how that works. Um, but, uh, so let's stay in touch. And hopefully we see this come back with some improvements.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay, um. Next item on the agenda. Uh, action item number two was removed. Action item number three. We're getting behind schedule here, uh, forty-seven fifty-one Pescadero. Uh, this is a process to, to build a new two-story. Dwelling with an attached ADU. And also a seven-hundred-and-thirty-square-foot detached ADU. At forty-seven fifty-one Pescadero. This is the RM one-one, uh, on the east side of Sunset Cliffs Boulevard is the applicant, uh. Present.
Yes, can you hear me, Kevin, Gary?
Yes, Gary, and I think you had asked me to share the drawings.
Yes, please. Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, let me get.
Is my picture coming up or is it just that emoji-looking thing?
I don't see you.
I see, uh. I see Chris and Richard. I don't see Kevin, but. I have a square for you.
You want me to start with the plans?
Sure. You don't need to see me, do you guys?
And you guys remember this was, uh. I think this came to us in August.
Yes.
And I put the motion on the agenda. It was to recommend returning to the PRC after clearing significant cycle issues. I have reviewed the cycle comments from the city. Um, it looks like they have cleared the major issues. Um. As far as they're concerned. And it was nice of the applicant to come back here. Uh, sounds like he probably wants to go to the full board in two weeks. Um, so I've got the, hold on here. Share. All right, can you guys see that?
Yes.
I got it, Ken.
We'll pull up and the, the zoom in on the site plan here. All right, go ahead, Gary.
Okay, uh, thank you. Good to see you here, everybody, again. Um, the good news is, well, let's see. Do we need to refresh? Do you need a description of what we're doing again? I gladly do it.
Um, I, I think I just covered that real briefly.
Yeah, the owners live in the, on the property. And in the rear, they built this in the nineties. And with the hopes of building a, a, um, uh. A new house for them years ahead, which is now in the front of the property. And also with that in mind and, uh. Trying to keep one of their kids on the property, they looked at the ADU. And, uh, so we have an ADU separate. And then we have part of the house, which originally was called a junior unit. Um, is part of the, had to be relabeled an ADU. So we have a small ADU, we're four hundred, um. Four-hundred-and-sixty square feet on the attached ADU and the separate one. Little L shape is seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven square feet, one-story. One of the middle's one-story. The two-story house in the front, the first four, part of that is designated the ADU. Or companion unit, I guess, is original. Original definition. Um, so the good is, uh, well, I, I met with you and your issues were. Um, a little bit too much paving. Um, so in the front, where we need a walkway and a little bit of patio, we, we've, uh, that's going to be unattached unit pavers. And you had a question on the encroachment into the visual corridor. View corridor, and we did have an encroachment that's been removed and. The city asked for a clarification on that, so that's been clearly removed. And then the other one, you wanted to make sure we cleared these big issues with the city. Traffic planning, et cetera. And the good news is everyone's cleared. Uh, environmental, just a couple of days ago gave us a negative on their determination. And so no more, uh. All the boxes are, are checked by the city. Uh, waiting for response from, uh, your group, um, hopefully a recommendation for approval. So I'll. Um. Answer any questions and any, anything of concern you may still have.
Thank you, Gary. Um, just going through the elevations here to refresh everyone's memory here. Let me go back. This is the floor plan for the front, uh, two-story house. And there's some section views over here.
Yeah, no walls on the property line. We're, we're five feet back, we're four is the minimum and on the little ADU, we have like nine foot and five foot, so. Lots of room around them.
And this is the attached ADU, um, as part of that front residence.
Yeah, that's like a studio.
Yeah, okay. Uh, this is the middle, uh, detached ADU here. Single story with the little roof access, it looks like.
Yep, one story with little roof, roof area, deck area.
And this is elevations of the front home. Uh. And this looks like it shows the paving and landscaping. Okay, um. I want to start on this one, um. The city is approving two ADUs. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Hmm, I wonder what the Coastal Commission would say about that.
Well, they say get a coastal permit, don't they?
Well, the city is the one tasked with enforcing the local coastal program. And the local coastal program is submitted to the Coastal Commission. For certification. So when the city violates the local coastal program. I mean, this is just like. Sounds like a broken record. Um. So my beef is the. You're not allowed to build two ADUs. In this zone. It just, it's not allowed. It might be next year. It probably will be next year. Um, and the city is marching along anyways. I don't know why. I'm really kind of sick and tired of, of this and I'm gonna. Start just contacting the plan checkers directly because. Uh, I did get a response from at least Low, who's the GSD director, uh, you know, we'll look into this, we'll make sure this and that, you know, blah, blah, blah. And then here we go. We got three projects tonight. Well, I'll, I'll let the other one, we'll, we'll see what happens on the next one, but.
Yeah, I have several other projects that are in, and the reviews come back, you need a coastal permit.
Really, yeah, they do require a coastal permit for, for these.
Isn't that what we're getting?
The rules. So, so my beef is that the. It doesn't allow two ADUs. Now, with that said. Um. You could easily incorporate that. That front ADU into the house and just call it a bedroom and you would still comply on parking.
Well, I'm ready. Beds increased parking by fractions, which I have, I. If necessary, I could call that a, a rec room and not have, you know, not, not sleeping room.
Well, it's already a three-bedroom, isn't it?
It's two bedrooms.
Oh.
The house is two bedrooms, living room, family room.
Well, let me help you out here. You've got a three-bedroom. What's the back house?
Oh, it's a, it's like a, it's above garages. It's a two-bedroom.
All right, you've got a two-bedroom in the back.
I had to, I can't be more than two bedrooms in the front or my, my parking fractions take me over.
Well, they're wrong on that. If they, did they tell you that?
Yeah, because I think they say beach impact parking.
You're not in the beach impact area. This is forty-seven hundred?
Yeah.
Beach impact is the other side of Sunset Cliffs Boulevard.
Well, they call it parking overlay and, anyway, they, they will approve two bedrooms.
So my point is, my point is you can put three, you could put four bedrooms in that front house. And, and with four parking spots. Um.
With the, including the rear, the existing?
Yes, yeah, it's without grandfather or anything. So I'll throw you a bone there. But it, it ain't going to be an ADU is. You know, uh, unless they want to violate the code, so, uh, I, I don't want to. Throw you through the wringer too much on that because it's really the city's issue. And, uh, all these applicants are getting dragged into it due to, uh. The plan reviewers. Um. The view corridor, I didn't see any changes on the front.
Oh, there, yeah, uh, on the cross-sections, you'll see there's nothing, um. Uh, the front house. Uh, it's on the cross-section page.
Section B.
It's or, um. It's.
I'm giving it to four five.
That's a five, that's the ADU, um.
The floor plans, Gary, show, um, first floor, you've got the fifteen-foot. And the twenty-foot setbacks, right?
Yeah, you look at section B up on the left corner there.
Okay.
There. That's, those roof lines over that balcony encroached out into that view corridor with an architectural element. Um, section B.
Okay.
Tent where, yeah, there was an element that came out. It's an architectural. Element that was definitely with encroached. It's allowed, but you can't because of the view corridor. It was cut that.
Yeah, so the, the issue is the entire front of this house. Other than the. Open part of the patio. That entire front is at a fifteen-foot setback and that doesn't comply. Um, so the view corridor doesn't let you. Build anything within that. You have to go back.
Nothing's within the fifteen. Fifteen foot.
The site plan said fifteen foot to the front of the house.
Right. Nothing encroaches inside the fifteen.
And the roof, well, no, but my point is half of that house has to be at twenty feet. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, we vary, it goes per floor.
It is, but your entire second floor, uh, sticks out to fifteen feet and the entire roof deck. So it doesn't, it doesn't step back to that twenty foot. Does that make sense? I mostly.
It sets back at the balcony on the second floor.
Well, yeah, but that balcony is covered up. It's, it's.
Yeah, it's, well, there's a covered balcony.
Yeah, but it's not, it sticks out to fifteen feet.
Did you want that balcony open? It's nothing sticks beyond fifteen. Do you say?
The entire house has to maintain, the entire house has to maintain a fifteen and twenty-foot setback per floor. Fifty-fifty at, at most.
Okay, well, I flip them. The first floor. Sets back, you can see it.
I get that.
Then the second, then on the second floor, it flips over the other floor.
It's overhangs and overhangs all the way out to the fifteen-foot line on the entire front of the house. At, at the porch level and down below at the roof deck. Anyways, um. I get it. You want to build out to the front as much as you can. You want to get the view. I get it. I learned this from neighbors bitching about people building out. Squeezing out every little last bid and then some, and everyone's trying to inch past each other, kind of like the last one on the height.
So you may not agree with the fifteen-twenty?
Well, no, I'm saying the city is wrong. I'm saying if they didn't catch that, they made a mistake there. Um, they asked for lines to be drawn showing the, um. Angled building envelope or whatever, the front setback line, and I don't see that on here.
Oh, that.
And that was one of the issues that came up at the last meeting. And I was thinking that, well, maybe when they make you draw that on there, then they'll see. That it doesn't comply, but it's not on this drawing set. It's on the sides of the building. But nothing on the front. So this east elevation here, that shows the front of the building. And it goes up about twenty-four.
Oh, I showed, I showed there. Look on the, I showed on the corners. Look at the front, north elevation, please, the front. You see my forty-five degree lines there?
Yeah, that's the sides. I'm talking about the front. The front of the house. Uh, east elevation.
Right.
It was at twenty-four feet all the way up at, at a fifteen-foot setback.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm clearly.
You can't do that. You gotta step it back at nineteen feet.
Nineteen?
Nineteen foot is the angled building envelope for RM one-one. And you can't go past twenty foot on half of the building on each floor with anything, anything at all. Because of the view corridor. If there was not a view corridor, you could have overhangs and stuff and this and that. You can't do any of that. So all this is basically out to a fifteen-foot setback and it's too high at that setback. And, um, I'm just speaking from the neighbor's perspective here. Um, it's not fair to them, that, you know, especially if they were forced to follow the rules. So those, those are the issues I have with this. Um, I'm not too concerned about the, the J-ADU because it's, it could just be called a bedroom, honestly. Any, any other issues, um, I don't know if I have any other notes on this one. If anyone else wants to go ahead with any comments, go for it.
Kevin, we might have skipped over public comment too, but I don't know if we have anyone from the public still on here.
Let me check. No, I think it's just us and the next presenter. He was probably nervous right now, um. Go ahead, Chris or Richard.
I don't have any comments, Kevin. You're very thorough on this. I, I, I'm. Glad to work this out with you. Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, Kevin, I was, um, it took me a minute to review and kind of remember what our comments were the last time around and, um, I caught most of them, but. There were one or two that you just brought up again, and I do definitely remember the conversation about the view quarter. Um, I don't know, the last time around, we did talk a lot about this angle, um, setback, but obviously it's a requirement. So, um, that, that's a good new piece of information, I think, for the applicant to be aware of, but, um. Yeah, I don't have anything else beyond that.
All right, drew it out just now. Sorry for my crude presentation technique here, but, uh, the, um. You can see the angles drawn. On that, it chops out, I have it hash mark where it chops out part of the patio upstairs and the angle. Uh, chopping out part of the roof.
Yeah, that takes the, uh, that architectural element, if we want to call it that. I, I didn't realize there was nineteen at the front, Kevin. I, I had the twenty, I thought we were below twenty-four. But you're saying nineteen in the front. I gotta double check that.
It's nineteen foot at the fifteen-foot, um, setback. And then it's twenty-four at the standard setback. And then it also kind of knocks the corner off of, uh, the other side as well. And it also means that you can't build out your front porch all the way out to. Uh, fifteen foot on the first floor either. You can't put anything there. You can't put a, I think the only thing you could put there is a. Like a low fence or something like that. And then it applies to the fence height regulation.
So they, I did the staggering, at least I thought it complied. The city didn't have an issue with it. I guess it, some of it. I, I guess not subjective, depends how you, how you lay it out and scale it out, but I attempted to step back the. The fronts of each side, you know, the first floor I set it back, second floor I set it back, alternated it. So I.
But then you have elements that come back out all the way to the front, so.
Well, that, I understand that nineteen, if that nineteen foot where that, that roof could be clipped back, I, it'll change the appearance of it, but. If we gotta live within the envelope rules, we've still got to make it look good.
What was the FAR on this, this one?
Yeah, we're right at the point seven-five. We don't have that.
Percent parking rule doesn't apply on these. This area, so you're good there. Um. Yeah, I mean, this is really a city issue is what this is. They, they shouldn't be putting this stuff in our lap like this. And. You know, I had one neighbor come to me after the construction started and they had to chop the whole front of the house off and redo it. And, uh, that's not fair to the, you know, the applicants either. That's more time and, and money and frustration for them when they couldn't maybe alter the design. To, to fit within those confines. So I think it's, uh, imperative that this kind of stuff be sorted out as soon as possible. Um, that said, you, you do have the cycle comments cleared and, you know, I want to. Make all these notes available to the chair. You know, we do have a duty to see projects, not, not delay them if, if they have otherwise been checked off, so. You know, that's the other side of this whole thing. So I do appreciate that you came back here and you made some, some tweaks on this. Um, you know, the city is misleading you here though. So I don't know what happens if you go to the planning board in two weeks from now.
Okay.
I'll leave that to you. Um, again, if, if you need references on any of these particulars. Um, I can, I can point you to those, you know, I will definitely point the, uh, the planner to it. I, in fact, I invited one of the supervisors there, several of them to our meeting here. And none of them wanted to show up. I wanted to show them the kind of stuff that they're sending through.
Right. Now I can look at that, I can look at that, uh, offset the angled plane.
We have any kind of motion that we can make tonight? I mean, I would, I would recommend that we. Kind of similar to the last one. I would recommend that the city or the, sorry, the applicant. Get a second look from the city on the, uh, front setback. Uh, view corridor. Angled building envelope. And. Ability to. Provide two ADUs. All of those, all of those, uh, things. I'd recommend that the applicant get a second look from the city on that before coming back to the board.
So should I question their approval? That would be hard to do.
I can question it for you. Cause I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do it one way or the other. I would appreciate if I had the support of the committee at least, uh, behind me on that.
Yes, Kevin, I, I'll second that. Uh, you're, you're suggesting that the applicant, um, resolves those issues and then comes back to this committee before going to the full board. Is that right?
I mean, the full board is, is fine if they're resolved. Or if they're resolved as much as they're going to get resolved, if the city refuses to change anything on that.
Well, I'm definitely going to look at, look at this and see if I can diagram it out, look at the definition. So I'll definitely want to keep the appointment and hopefully. There's something I can demonstrate or adjust before the meeting.
Yeah, I mean.
The two ADU issues is, is a policy. That they've, um, they say get a coastal permit, so I don't know if we.
Yeah, I, I get that.
I'm definitely going to look at the requirements and try and get, try and diagram them. If I need to change them, I'm, I'll, I'll give my best attempt before we meet in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the information bulletin on ADUs says in bold letters, this doesn't apply in the coastal zone. It says it right on there.
Unless.
It doesn't, period. Unless it's certified by the.
Comments I'm getting back on projects that are in the coastal zone.
We gotta move on here. We've got, we've got a second. I, I don't, you know, if you want to go, if you can change some of these things and come back to the full board, I, I hate to keep running you through the wringer on this.
No, I'm, I'm gonna, like I say, I'm gonna review what you said and I'll have, um. Um, answers or adjustments to the plan for you. At the group. Please.
And feel free to, you know, shoot it over to me. I'm, I'm, I'm just one person. That tries to influence the other votes on the board. And sometimes I do, sometimes I don't. So if you want to run it by me first, that's, that's totally appropriate.
Okay, will do.
Um, and then ultimately, Andrea, the chair, uh, decides on what gets on the agenda or not, so.
Okay, we'll, we'll plan on keeping me on the agenda for now, please.
All right, um, we haven't voted. Richard, are you in favor of that motion?
Yes.
Chris? I know it sounds silly because you seconded it.
I mean, I, I think I am, but it sounds like this is already an agenda item at the next full board, so I'm not sure what we're voting.
Well, it's not, it's, it's not. I have to basically tell Andrea what the status is of it. And we're ultimately, and it may, and it's up to the, you know, the, if the applicant wants to press ahead irregardless of this discussion. And Andrea's okay with that, then you don't get.
Kevin, I, I think you might want to bring up the topic with the full board about the city passing on through plans to us that they may not. Deem correct. Particularly the ADU issue.
Yeah, I brought it up with Andrea, but I, maybe it should be a discussion on.
I, I think it should too. I know we're getting a little, yeah, sorry, I know we're getting a little off topic for what the motion is. I'll, I'll support the motion on the table. If the applicant feels they'll be able to resolve the issues, um, to have this addend, agendized for the next full board meeting. And with your recommendation, Kevin, that's fine.
That wasn't part of the. I guess that wasn't really necessarily part of the motion. It's going to be the next meeting. I mean, the city doesn't turn away on anything in two weeks.
I'm sorry, then if it's not the next meeting, the full board, that, that's fine. It sounds like there's an effort to hear, to get it at the next meeting, but, uh, I guess the applicant will determine if. If they feel like that's the position, you know, if, if their comments have been resolved in two weeks' time to do that or not, but, um. I'll, I'll second your motion, um, just with your recommendation that you feel like it could bypass this committee and go to the full board if the applicant resolves the matters.
Well, if you don't, if you want to agree, don't agree with the city approval of the plans. That's sort of a blanket. I don't know if I'll be able to satisfy you in all these issues, especially on that one policy issue on the two ADUs, so. I would have to move ahead without your recommendation possibly.
And, and I, that's exactly, I think, to Richard's point, and I think where we're headed, just with the full board discussion on this. And obviously Kevin's been alluding to some correspondence with the city, uh, recently. And, uh, I, I just do think we're starting, I mean, we, we, we really don't have the representation from the city at these meetings that we need to have. Um, there's definitely some, some missed things that are occurring and, uh. Uh, you know, it's time to have a conversation about that and see, see some action. I don't, I don't want to use this project necessarily to create a whole, uh. A stink for the applicants here that are, that are seemingly trying to do what they have to do to accomplish the project. So I think it's two separate issues. One is, let's go ahead and vote, uh, on this recommendation, but then secondly, I feel like. Uh, you know, I think.
That's maybe a discussion. Lengthier discussion.
I think Richard's right, though. I think it's a full board discussion, so. I second the motion.
Um, Gary, the, I mean, there's nothing here that can't be solved. Like I said, the ADU, the second one in the house, it can be a bedroom. It's not going to impact your parking, uh, you know, the roof.
I wish you were my traffic reviewer because he battled me pretty hard on parking, so I.
I will gladly point that out to him for your, for your benefit. This, this has four parking spots and that's a million times more than a lot of developments have. Um, the, you know, the roof, the front roof issues and the overhang issues, those are not.
Those, those aren't project killers.
Those have, and they have nothing to do with the ADU disagreement. So those are, those stand regardless, but there's nothing that can't be resolved. Um, it's not, you know, it's not going to blow up the whole thing. Um, so we have a, I think that was a vote, that was a three-zero-zero vote to, um. I, I've got it on the recording, so I'll pull it off of that, but it was effectively to, to go back to the city and, um.
Well, no, I'm not going, I'm going, I'm going to review the items you brought up. I can't go back to the city and say. You approve my project. I'm sorry, you shouldn't have approved it. Take your little X off the box, but I will address, I will, I will look at your, review your items and adjust the plans. But I'm not going to have the city take something off. You know how long it would take that?
I understand, I understand. I understand, and you're certainly entitled to, you know, go forward with the, the, you know, uh, negative recommendation from the board as well.
Just, just one quick FYI, the, the owner wants to build the, the, this middle ADU. That was the whole thing, how the project started, and we submitted that separately, and then since the state didn't act. The city, um, we had to throw the few, everything into a coastal permit. So the house in the front, it'll get built someday, but the ADU will get built first of that. I know that doesn't matter too much, but that's just kind of how it's going to go. So the design of the front, if it has to change to. To be the interpretation you're seeing on the offsets. That, that, then that's not their biggest concern right now. It's getting that little ADU in the middle started where the, their son can live. But get married, you know, all the personal issues you hear about that in the long run don't matter, but in the short term, they do.
Based on our meeting tonight and the vote, I'm going to go, uh, directly to the plan checker with these issues. And we'll see what happens. Um, certainly if you want to, uh, specific parts of that that apply, you can, you, you're welcome to correspond with me. Um, this one's done. Finish this up. We got one more. Um, thank you, Gary, for putting.
Okay. All right, thank you.
See you, uh, next time.
Now, the full group, correct?
That's up to you.
Yes, please. Yep, please. I have an approved project by the city. I can't stop it. At the moment, I'm going to try and modify it and answer your, address your.
Okay, well, we'll go to the full group if that's what's needed. I don't, you know, we're not, the group can't, uh, bust the timeline on these things. I get that.
Gary, you have every right to move forward with your plans. This planning board only has recommendations. That's all.
I understand.
If the city says move forward, then that's what you're going to do. We understand that.
Right, but I'm still going to consider what you're saying.
You absolutely should. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, uh, forty-seven fifty-one Pescadero. Wait, sorry, that was. My bad. That's my other page here, five oh one eight Narragansett Avenue. Uh, this is an existing duplex with a two-car garage in the back on a narrow lot. And this is a project to build an ADU on top of that garage. Uh, you guys may remember this project, the, the duplex came to us, uh, two years ago, I think. Uh, Stephanie, you have the floor and you have the ability to screen share.
Awesome. Hi, guys. Uh, welcome to the end night. Um, it seems like this is, uh, going to be the, of three problem children tonight. Um, I think the city had sent me along with another ADU issue that shouldn't be here, but let's go through it. And then we will address, uh, what I believe to be an FAR issue. But let's go through it and then, and then we'll, uh, try to make this as short and painless as. Um, let me, how do I do the screen share? Share screen?
Yeah, just get it over.
Yeah, here we go. Can you see it?
Yes.
Yep, okay, cool. So, um, like Kevin said, uh, you guys saw this project a couple of years ago. We, uh, built a. Yep, okay, cool. So, like Kevin said, you guys saw this project a couple of years ago. We built a duplex. At the front of the property and a detached garage at the rear of the alley. This is the, let me zoom in a little here. This is the, that is currently off the alley. We're not gonna make any changes to that garage. We're gonna leave it alone. There is also some parking, so the garage is set off the alley. And then there's also parking spaces. So there are currently four parking spaces on the lot. The two-car garage, we will build the ADU on top of it. It's just a one-bedroom, four hundred and fifty-three square foot. ADU, it's got an eight-foot ceiling, so the overall height of the building is about twenty-two foot eight. It follows the two side walls, which are three foot, I'm sorry, I think they're thirty inches off the property lines. And then we're kind of living a little bit towards the rear just to get a little bit more square footage. The elevations, oops, excuse me. I'm not very good at Zoom, so forgive me for being a little over the place, a little jumpy here. So the existing garage is just a little stucco building, so we continue the, the same materials up the sides. So we'll just have stucco siding. Roofing, which matches the rear of the existing duplex. Which I can show you here. This is the duplex that was built. This is from Narragansett. So the Narragansett elevation has some actual different materials and. Stucco, excuse me, stucco and some siding. And then that's the side of the building, the existing building. This is the elevation of the rear of the duplex that faces the garage. So you can see that it's all stucco on the backside of the building there. This is the side of garage faces the duplex. This is where the stairs will go. And then this is the view from the alley of the, so the duplex will, excuse me, the ADU will go on top of this building. Excuse me. We're not gonna change anything on the actual ground or impact any landscaping. The footprint of the building isn't gonna change, with the exception of, of course, putting the staircase in. The intended use of the ADU is not to be rented out. The owner lives on the property right now and will use the ADU. For his family members to visit. He is Indian and his family comes into town a lot and his, his parents are old, so he wants to be able to have them. Close by when they come into town. And now the, the big glaring issue that I realize is probably the, the city faux pas and my misunderstanding of. The ADU allowances for FAR is that when we did this duplex project back in two thousand and nineteen, we maxed out our then. And I thought that we were allowed to go over the FAR allowance for ADUs. But I'm understanding that probably in the coastal zone, we are not. So that is, that is where I think I am. So I'm, I'm welcome. Any questions, comments? Or anything at this time?
I have a quick question. The elevations. One of them had like a wall with no windows on it. Where is that gonna go?
These, these two, they're on both sides. So facing the neighbors. And the reason for that is they're, because they're too close to the property lines.
I've heard that one before.
I'm sorry?
Is that a fire rating concern or?
It is. Yeah, when they're, the walls are closer than three feet, we only have thirty inches to both of those property lines. And when they're closer than three feet, you can't. You can't put windows in them. You can't have openings.
I mean, every single building downtown is built up against the property line and they have windows and they're raided.
Yeah, you could do fire-rated windows, I suppose.
I'm trying to ignore the, the big elephant in the room for the moment.
Yep, understood. It's there, it's coming.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the big walls of stucco, it's just, I mean, this one side I, I see is a two-story apartment, the other side is sort of open, but. I think it would benefit everyone, including the occupants here, to have some more sunlight in there, you know, or at least some more daylight getting in. I think that's a definitely a worthwhile expense and within the community plan better. There is specific language about having blank walls. I think we need a law that says anyone, someone has to stare at. Like this, they, they get to pick what mural you're gonna paint on at least.
Do you, that is an issue for just the second floor? Because when we, we didn't have new windows on the ground floor.
Well, I mean, the first floor is a garage, so.
Okay.
Wouldn't expect that.
Okay.
I, I had a project like this similar and my own project, my, you know, my own compadres here said I didn't have enough windows. So I'm adding some more.
Okay.
The, the, the low-pitched roof, the hipped roof is, is great, minimizing that, that impact on the neighbors. I don't see any ten-foot-high floor ceilings here or.
No, we did eight feet.
Lifts inside of here, so that's. I like the, the overall envelope. Yeah, the, the. So the FAR issue that she mentioned is there is pending. Municipal code changes to allow. ADUs. In excess of the maximum FAR, up to eight hundred square feet. Those are not certified here. So the city should not have. You know, this, this might be legal next year, like, you know, like some of the other ones, but it's, it's not right now. They've said, they've taken people's money on coastal permits on stuff that they knew damn well was not allowed, and sometimes they flag it, sometimes they don't. And it's a shame. We had one come to us with an ADU that was already, the building was already well over FAR. And then, you know, they took seventeen thousand dollars worth of the guy's money and then told him that. So.
Yeah, I think tonight would have been a really good night for someone from the planning department to be on all three of these projects.
Well, luckily, the city is actually cutting staffing even more at the planning department, so we'll have even less. I mean, we've had almost zero, but we'll have less than that if that's possible, support from the city.
Wonderful.
So thank your council member, Joe LaCava, for that. He used to serve on a community plan too. No shame.
Wow.
Now he's trying to kill us off. So. Richard, Chris, do you have anything on this one?
I'll just throw in quickly, I was looking at the facades as well, and I think if you could even just squeeze a single window in, this is assuming, you know, you come back. A year from now. A window on the, on the northeast side of the second level, I think could go a long way and get some light in from the east in the morning time for the, for. Sounds like family members that would be up there at least part of the year. So otherwise, yeah, I hate to see just these blank walls of, of nothing. But again, using Google Earth as a friend here, there are two buildings that are very close, you know, within those setbacks on either side and. This garage is already kind of walled in, but it does appear to have the building to the east has a little bit of a setback off the north. You know, so I think if you put a window there on the, on the east side, furthest to the north, I think you could get some light into the second story. So that would be my one recommendation.
Okay.
Maybe you could go with thirty feet up with that stucco on the property line.
You got it.
Yeah, that's right. And I guess I was gonna say that too. I mean, I do appreciate the fact, I mean, this lot is as narrow as the first applicant, is, is, is as narrow as the first applicant. But they're not, we're not trying to max out to the zero property line. And so, you know, I appreciate that as well.
It actually has more FAR and yet it has much less impact on the neighbors.
Yeah, that was painful to see that, that maxed out to that wall, to that property line there.
I mean, people just don't realize that there's a real, there's a reason why we have setbacks. I mean, it really, even three feet, which I, you know, the, the planning board, my colleagues know, I don't. I'm not a fan of the shotgun homes that you can squeeze in and have three foot on either side either, but just the three feet, it'll get you something, you know, start building up to the property lines, forget about it.
The three-foot limit was designed for fire and safety and also access for your utilities, the trash, the garbage, everything else. If you build to the, the property line on both sides, you have neither of those.
And it gives you six-foot spacing between the structures.
Right. For, for the purposes of whatever, those blank walls would look really nice with the wire and nail painted on it like I have on my house.
Rock climbing wall, like they could put.
Climbing wall would be cool, yes.
It's, it's really challenging sometimes, guys, you know, and I know you know this because you've all been in, in one situation or another, but I have a client in, in the Torrey Pines area who's doing a real small ADU, it's like three hundred square feet. And they want to put it two feet to the property line, and I keep trying to push back and that's what they want. It's what they want, it's what they want, it's what they want. And I, I'm. Doing this ADU, it's a small little single-story thing, it's fine, but I hate it. I, and I don't want to do it, but what do I do? Quit? Not do the job? I mean, that's my option, right?
They say you could build right to the property line, but effectively you can't do that because you need to have a footing at the base of your wall. That means you're gonna be building on the neighbor's property. If you want your wall to go straight up from the property line, you're gonna have a cement. Piece going into the neighbor's yard. This isn't feasible to have a wall that's right on the property line. It's not feasible. But that's what.
I agree. And, and, and there is no way, and I know we're getting a little off topic, but there is no way that. Going back to project number one that was on the agenda tonight, there's no way that the construction guys are not gonna be on the neighbor's property. This is, I don't know what she was talking.
Absolutely correct.
There's no.
And when Kevin said I wouldn't let him on the property to begin with, I thought that was pretty poignant, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't let them on my property either.
Yeah, we used to have this running joke back in the day when we, people would be like, well, how are you gonna build that? And we would send skyhook. Because there's no such thing. You just make up a magical thing to hold shit up in the air. Sorry, hold stuff up in the air.
A helicopter.
Yeah, well, like that one that went up on Abbott Street, the modular, there you go.
Well, yeah.
Freight containers and drop them in.
Yeah, yeah. Kevin, just one really quick question. I think, I think we're probably wrapped up on this, but, and I know we need to vote and all that, but do you know, do you have you heard anything from? When the Coastal Commission might be approving these? Or when the city might be adopting these rules for the ADUs in the coastal zone?
Well, there's various ones. There's like three different ones. I'm not sure which, I think this one is getting close.
Okay.
Being seen. I don't know, they don't really share their agenda. Enough in advance, know what's going on.
Okay.
There is a, the city maintains a sort of a, a database of all the code sections that are, are pending. Coastal Commission review. And they're, they're really backed log right now as well. In addition to that, this one, like the junior unit one, I think was a different issue. And this is, this is a different one from that, this eight hundred square foot allowance. So. I think it's ordinance two one two five four, here I've got it on my. I have a little cheat sheet here that I use for this, guys, so I'll give you, give you a hint here. I should charge money for this.
You should.
I appreciate you, you being forthcoming here and, and sharing your project with us. I think we've covered it.
Okay.
And. I don't know what we do with this one. What do you guys want to do for a motion? I think they, I think that this one needs to sit on the, the burner for, you know, another six months or something, wait for the, wait for it to actually be legal. That's what I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be the, in the best interest, right, for the applicant, but like the, like you said to the last applicant, I mean, we really. We can't stop anyone. If, if the city's approving it, I mean, all we can do is voice our, you know, recommendation to not approve, but. Yeah, I, if it were me, I would, I would definitely advise not suggesting that this come in front of the board, because I think a lot of people on that body would. Really similar comments to what we're saying here today, and then it's kind of a waste of time, so.
I'm trying to look at the cycle.
I reviewed them while you, while you guys were in the other, on the other agenda items, and it didn't come up at all in, in the cycle comments, but. I'm not one to, I, I'm a rule follower. I, I'm not one to go, well, the city didn't catch it, so let me just keep going. I don't, I don't want to go down a road that's.
They'll catch it. They'll just catch it after it costs you a bunch of money and then.
Exactly.
Right, that'll cost you a lot of money later. That's bad, bad.
I already got my roof trusses out on the truck here and you're.
Exactly. Or they'll, they'll catch it when we're in plan check for the actual building permit, and then they'll say, oh, sorry, you spent ten grand on a coastal permit.
Can you remember the Sun Road building? The city approved that. And then the FAA said, ah, yeah.
They gotta take two stories down?
That's right, that's right.
And then they sued the city. I don't know what the result of that was. It probably, they can go away. My notes, yeah, no significant issues. I didn't have transportation comments at the time. I think technically speaking, the parking requirements actually increased in OB temporarily as a result of these legal changes. And when you put an ADU, you're supposed to bring it up to code with the new changes, which requires. Two point two five per two-bedroom unit. And that's not good either, but that's kind of a weird anomaly. They got rid of some of the parking discounts. I'm gonna make a motion that the. We recommend the board reject the project. Because it exceeds the FAR by four hundred square feet. And the ADU allowance is not certified in the coastal zone. That's my motion.
Kevin, what do you mean by the ADU allowance? Can you elaborate a little?
So the cities are this, I don't know if it's the state or the city is, is trying to allow updating square feet. In addition to the FAR limit. And so that's, that's the process that she's trying to design under here.
Roger, Roger that. I'll second your motion.
All right, I appreciate the support.
And Kevin, you made that this subcommittee, you recommending that this subcommittee reject it, is that right?
I mean, ultimately, we, we tell the board to, to reject.
Right, yeah.
Recommended that the board rejects it based on.
We do not recommend it.
Right, okay.
I'm telling the board to reject it based on, based on those two things.
Right, so subcommittee, your, 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 your motion is that we rejected it, therefore the full board should reject it as well.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we make recommendations to the full board, so I'm telling them to reject it, if it gets that far.
Well, I guess that's my point. It doesn't, if we recommend that it doesn't, if we're recommending to reject it now, then the full board wouldn't see it and really ever vote on it, unless Andrea decided for some reason she's.
They could overrule our recommendation anytime, Chris.
Yeah, Andrea, that's what I mean. Andrea could pull it as an agenda item if she wanted.
And they have done it in the past as well.
So the, the project committee only. Our only capacity is to report back to the full board. We can't go and tell the city to reject something. We have no authority.
Sure, obviously, obviously.
We can only tell the full board what to do. Individually, you can, you know, do what you want. You can chain yourself to a tree if you want. Or, you know, go, go complain at DSD, but our authority here is to report to the full board.
No, I, I, I fully understand the responsibilities of this subcommittee. I, I'm just saying in terms of the motion on the floor, we're, we're, your, your motion is that we reject it as a subcommittee.
I, no, my motion is to recommend the full board reject the project based on it exceeding FAR. And the ADU. Eight hundred square foot allowance not being certified in the coastal zone.
All right, yeah, we might begin in the semantics a little bit, only because I'm saying the full board isn't here to actually. Vote, we're, we're voting as a subcommittee, but I understand that our vote is a recommendation to the board to also reject this project.
All right, well, with that said, do you support that motion?
Yes, I do.
Richard? You seconded it?
Yes.
All right, that's three zero zero. I do appreciate your guys' support, because some of these, I know you said, I don't, it's not my business, I don't want to get involved, and then we go to the full board and it's the same. Mess all over again, so. Better to try and intervene earlier in the process.
So Kevin, I have a direct question for you.
Go for it.
Why aren't you working for the city?
I don't think I. I'm incompetent enough to work there. I think they would fire me in a heartbeat for making.
But maybe not for the reasons you're thinking. Anyways, I, just a straight question. Thank you.
The city is where, where are. The city is where, where our engineers go. When they can't hack it in private industry. Wait, are we still recording?
I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks, I guess, unless you got more.
Oh, no, that's, that's the end of the meeting. Yeah, I don't know that any of these are going to be ready for the next full board meeting, so. That's it, we can adjourn this.
Yeah, Stephanie, thank you for your presentation, it was very good.
Kevin, thanks for squeezing me in tonight, I know that was last minute.
No problem. So I learned that upon adjourning a meeting, that's actually supposed to be an action item. So if anyone objects to me adjourning the meeting, speak now or I'll call it a consent vote.
I will second the motion for adjourning the meeting.
Thank you and good night.
Okay. Eight oh nine PM, thank you guys.
Thanks, guys.